I want to try this again, being on mute at this time. I'm going to call this meeting to order and hopefully you all can hear me. And this is a city council workshop. And I'm going to ask our city clerk to please do the roll call.
Thank you. So far, I don't see Councilmember Johnson on the list, so I'll start the roll call with Councilmember Lopez.
I believe he stepped out for a second.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson, I don't see her. Mayor Protemru.
Present.
And Mayor Detroit.
We're present, let's wait for one minute to see if our other two councilmembers also arrive.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Diane, did you want to say something?
No, I was just making sure my volume was working.
Okay, you raised your hand, so I thought you had something to say.
Oh, okay, I didn't intentionally do that. How do I undo that?
I'm.
I don't know what I hit.
I think on the participant list, you should have an option.
Is it below the screen where it says raise hand and then you hit it to lower?
I feel like my screen's going to be different than a participant screen, so.
Hmm, well, until I figure it out, just ignore it.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I think I can do it for you, so I'll do that.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you again, I just want to confirm that Councilmember Bill Lopez is in attendance. Are you there, Ben?
I saw him, I saw him earlier.
Yeah, he just, yeah, stepped out for a second. How about Councilwoman Johnson, are you there? Denise? Hello?
I don't see her in the participant list, I'm trying to see if anyone knew us.
See if I can find Councilmember Lopez.
It's fine, Bill, he's, he's. He made text as he stepped out.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure everything's okay.
Okay, so we, we can start with three.
All right, is, just, we'll check once more, is, is Councilmember Lopez there?
I think I am, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have. We don't have Councilmember Johnson, so let's go get started then. And we have a workshop, as I stated before, this is the implementation of residential, commercial, organic waste recycling. As a result of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. And we have Bertech with us today that will be doing the presentation. And I'll ask if the city manager has something he wants to start with.
Members of the city council, as you know, in 2016, the California passed Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which is the largest and most prescriptive, prescriptive waste management legislation in California history, at least since AB nine three nine, which established waste diversion targets for each of the respective communities in the state. SB thirteen eighty-three is designed to be part of California's strategy to combat climate change. It does this by diverting organics such as food scraps, yard trimmings, paper and cardboard. All of this away from landfills where these organics produce an estimated twenty percent of the state's methane production, which is eighty-four, which is eighty-four percent more potent than carbon dioxide pollutants are. Also, air pollutants like PM two point five, which contributes to a variety of health conditions such as asthma. Although there are clear costs associated with increasing the cities or the state's recycling of organics, these costs are far less costly than programs associated with fighting climate change such as the reimagination of the state's transportation systems. Under SB thirteen eighty-three, local jurisdictions play a vital role in facilitating the progress of SB thirteen eighty-three, achieved in part by coordinating compliance programs with respective counties, waste haulers, waste processing facilities, recyclers, commercial businesses, residents, and edible food recovery programs. One primary objective of SB thirteen eighty-three is the use of organic materials to produce end products like compost, biofuel, which local organizations are required to purchase according to AB thirteen eighty-three. Starting in 2022, stakeholders and partners will create action plans, lay out path of compliance. Required programs and activities include updating refuse agreements to reflect SB eighteen thirty, SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. And I believe that Bertech will be alluding to a effort to update the city's franchise agreement as it relates to SB thirteen eighty-three. Adopting enforceable ordinance, considering rate increases, the support collection and recycling requirements, determining staff and funding requirements needed to implement SB thirteen eighty-three, providing organic waste collection procedures for all residents and businesses, establishing edible food recovery programs that by 2025 recover an estimated twenty percent of edible food that would otherwise go to landfills, and this food would be directed to feeding people in need. Conducting inspections of tier one and tier two food generators, tier one would be in 2022, and tier two would be in 2024. There is a breakdown of which each of these tiers represent. Those are basically commercial establishments. And as we go forward, you will be receiving information on how the program will be directed to implement. Our enforcement programs related to these different tiers. Providing education outreach to all affected parties, procuring recycled organization waste products like compost, mulch, renewable natural gas, electricity, and recycled paper, recycled content paper and paper products based on the procurement target that is established for each agency by CalRecycle. Capacity planning, which each organization has to undergo enforcement and record keeping and reporting requirements. With us this evening and providing a general description of SB thirteen eighty-three program implementation for Montclair is Mike Aragon and Michael Hefman, both from Bertech. And just coming online and available to answer any questions that members of the council may have is Mr. Benjamin Johnson. He is with CalRecycle. And with that, Mr. Aragon, I'm handing the microphone over to you, sir.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Starr, thank you very much and for such a thorough overview of our presentation today and the description of SB thirteen eighty-three. Once again, Mayor and council members, Mike Aragon, Vice President with Vertech Waste Industries, and I'm joined by my associate, Michael Hefman, Municipal Services Manager. We're going to be going through a fairly detailed PowerPoint presentation this evening. And then we will follow that up with Q and A, Q and A session. So please, if you can hold your questions till the end, it makes it, makes it flow a lot easier. But if there is something in between, please just let us know, we'll do our best to answer on the spot. And if there is a certain slide that you have a question on, they are all numbered, so if you could reference that number. Once again, we appreciate the opportunity to present this program to the city council for their consideration in the future. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hefman. And he will go through our slide presentation that I believe you, yes, we have it up on, on the screen now. So, Michael, go ahead and take it from there.
Thank you, Mike, and good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, we'll take a look at SB's thirteen eighty-three's program requirements. Program objectives for SB thirteen eighty-three include the efforts to reduce the production of short-lived climate pollutants, specifically methane. It's estimated that twenty-five percent of methane emissions come from organics waste that has been landfilled. There are also requirements to divert and recover edible food for the food insecure and to decrease the city's greenhouse gas footprint through increased sustainability. Now, SB thirteen eighty-three is broken into six major components. Those components include the collection systems, education and outreach activities, edible food recovery, procurement activities, documentation and enforcement. And we'll cover each one of those program elements in the next slides. The first element is focused on the collection systems. SB thirteen eighty-three mandates organic waste collection programs for all commercial, multifamily, and residential generator. Thirteen eighty-three also mandates container colors and labeling requirements. As you'll see on the screen, black or gray containers are required for trash collection. Brown containers are used for source separated food waste system, collection systems. Green containers are used for green waste only or organics recycling collection. And blue containers are used for your traditional recycling programs such as paper, plastics, and metal. If you'll notice on the barrel row, the bottom row there, there are also examples of what the labeling will look like on the barrels as we move forward with program implementation. Labeling requirements include both English and additional languages that are spoken in the communities. In this case, it's Spanish. And they also require to identify the common items accepted in the container and the common items prohibited from being put into the container. Now, for residences, residential organics collection is already occurring in the green waste recycling barrel. Residential food waste will be included once programs are implemented. Residents will be asked to bag and collect their food waste, place it into a plastic bag, and place that plastic bag into their green waste barrel for collection on their service day. This will allow Bertech to use existing containers and equipment out there in the field at the time and not require an additional truck to be added to service. There are waivers and exemptions that are authorized by SB thirteen eighty-three for commercial businesses. The most common waiver that we may experience are called de minimis or low-volume waivers. And what the waiver requires is that for businesses that produce two cubic yards of total solid waste or more, but generate less than twenty gallons of organics, they can be authorized or receive a waiver from the organics collection program. For those businesses that have, generate less than two cubic yards of total solid waste per week and generate less than ten gallons of organic waste, they may also be offered a waiver from the organic recycling program. There are also physical space waivers that can be approved for certain businesses. Now. Common occurrence in the field, and they will need to be validated by both city personnel and Bertech to ensure that there is a legitimate space constraint at the business. And I would add that the state in CalRecycle looks as physical space waivers to be something that will go away in the future as city building codes are updated and incorporate the necessary space to provide the recycling collection program containers at each commercial business. Education and outreach is the second program requirement, and we already have efforts underway. Outreach efforts will focus on how to recycle organic waste, proper container utilization techniques, methane gas reduction benefits, and organic waste reduction programs. Now, there'll be a variety of methods used in the organic outreach efforts. And we'll use and work with existing newsletters and mailing campaigns. And we'll also be using social media platforms such as YouTube. As you can see, there's a QR code there on the slide, and if you have a printed version of the PowerPoint, you can scan that QR code and it'll take you to one of our recent SB thirteen eighty-three videos. There is also a component for route audits for customers subscribing to the organic waste services. And if we find prohibited container contaminants, those customers will receive additional education and outreach information and materials to help them comply with the program requirements. Commercial customers, in addition to the standard messaging and benefits of organic waste reduction services, will also have additional requirements placed on them. Commercial customers are required to have containers available to their employees and customers that mirror the color and labeling requirements of thirteen eighty-three inside the business and where they're made available. They are also required to train staff on proper container utilization techniques and provide information to new tenants about which containers to use and what are the prohibited items associated with each container. Commercial businesses are also required to periodically inspect their containers to make sure employees, staff, and customers are following the program requirements. A third pillar of thirteen eighty-three is to divert and recover edible food and participate in food rescue programs. Commercial customers with the additional education and outreach and container requirements are also then identified as being commercial edible food generators. And if the commercial business qualifies as a commercial edible food generator, they'll be identified as either tier one or tier two type generators. Now, tier one generators, program requirements come into effect this year, January first, 2022. And for tier two generators, those program requirements do not begin until January first, 2024. Now, tier one generators include supermarkets, grocery stores, wholesale food vendors, and food service providers and food distributors. And as you can see on the slide, tier two will expand program requirements to restaurants with certain seating or space capacities, hotels, large venue events, education agencies, state agencies. And what's required from immediately these tier one commercial edible food generators is that they divert the maximum amount of edible food that they can. And in order to do that, they have to contract and subscribe or partner with food recovery organizations or food recovery services to ensure that that edible food is then transferred to the food recovery organization and further given to those who are food insecure. Now, as with the commercial edible food generators having to enter into agreements with food recovery organizations, there may also be a need to amend current franchise agreements to account for and accommodate these additional program requirements that are being implemented with the thirteen eighty-three regulation. Procurement is a major component of thirteen eighty-three and works in two specific ways. Jurisdictions are required to procure renewable organic products from the material that they're diverting from the landfill and also to have a purchasing policy outlining the requirements for procuring writing paper and paper products within the city. Oops, sorry about that, wrong way. Procurement efforts for renewable organic waste requirements include compost and mulch or utilizing renewable natural gas and organic conversion technologies to procure heat, electricity, or vehicle fuel. There's also an ability to purchase electricity from biomass conversion facilities. This slide here shows the city of Montclair's estimated Department of Finance population estimates for 2021 and each of the individual categories in which procurement targets can be met. Now, these categories total up what it would take to meet the procurement requirements for thirteen eighty-three and any one category, but a variety of different approaches could be used to satisfy the program requirement. Renewable gas in the form of vehicle fuel, electricity or heat are the first three categories in DGE kilowatt hours in terms. Electricity from biomass conversion is listed in kilowatt hours and then tons of compost or tons of mulch that could be procured and utilized by the city to meet procurement requirements. Now, with the inavailability right now of renewable natural gas and the infrastructure is being currently built to support programs that thirteen eighty-three outlines, compost applications will be the most readily available material as produced in Bertech's West Valley Material Recovery Facility. And they could focus on supplementing CalGreen requirements of sixty-five percent participating community compost giveaways as we've done in the past and potentially be expanded. And there's also a model water efficiency landscape ordinance requirement in thirteen eighty-three on Amuelo, which requires compost and mulch applications for new construction and certain tenant improvements. The other aspect of the procurement is the city's own purchasing policy. So the city is required to purchase recycled content paper that has at least thirty percent of renewable recycled paper fiber content. Paper products such as printing and writing paper, hanging files, and other supplies are all included in this requirement. And the jurisdiction should have a policy that requires vendors to supply them and procure these paper products at the thirty percent recycled content. Now, as part of thirteen eighty-three requirements, copies of invoices received, group of purchases, and certifications to the validity of the recycled paper content are all required under the regulation. Documentation is a large aspect of thirteen eighty-three. Bertech has a specifically designed software system to categorize and document the number of activities that are required to be part of the implementation plan for thirteen eighty-three. They include monitoring, auditing, and certain reporting requirements that will all be summarized and detailed and presented to CalRecycle on an annual basis. In addition to the implementation record, which details where the city's at in, on April first of 2022, the first annual report detailing the program implementation is due in October. Here's a list of the sixteen elements of the monitoring and reporting requirements outlined by thirteen eighty-three. Enforcement mechanisms or ordinances, program descriptions, organic waste, route reviews, waste evaluations, the haulers' programs, the recovered organic waste product recovery, paper procurement. Basically, every detail is tracked through the system and is why that really requires a database to be able to document, categorize, and compile the information required for the annual reporting. An enforceable ordinance is also required under thirteen eighty-three. CalRecycle had expected cities to have adopted the thirteen eighty-three ordinance prior to December thirty-first of last year. Thirteen eighty-three ordinances focus on the six program components as outlined and have detailed descriptions of the activities required and include civil penalties and non-compliance information along with route audits or route reviews and compliance requirements associated with thirteen eighty-three. Bertech will begin conducting route audits as required by the regulation on or about April first. And route audits are basically conducted onsite at the generator's location, looking physically into the bin for prohibited container components or through waste characterization or waste evaluation processes where we look and detail and analyze the route itself and the material stream collect. CalRecycle also outlines its enforcement process timeline. Basically, CalRecycle will focus on compliance assistance first and dedicate enforcement efforts to serious offenders later. While the regulation becomes effective January first, thirteen eighty-three does outline an escalating enforcement process and timeline, beginning with an NOV that would be issued. And then, as you can see, there would be ninety, ninety to a hundred and eighty days to correct said NOV. And if that shouldn't rectify the, the problem encountered or the non-compliance component, realize the corrective action plan would have to be implemented, which would detail out the steps necessary to put the jurisdiction into compliance. There's also a component for complaint investigation that's detailed in the regulation. And what this says is, any resident or business can contact either Bertech or the city about a violation or potential violation of thirteen eighty-three. And thirteen eighty-three outlines the investigation, documentation, and record keeping requirements to process that complaint once it's received. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you, and I know Mike or I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much. I'll start with this question here is, and I realize this, this law, SB thirteen eighty-three, obviously is enforced now. And we're past December thirty-first, 2021, so we're kind of technically behind the ball right now, but I realize there's time to get caught up. My big question right now is, how do you, who's going to do the education component? And who's going to be doing the enforcement or warning component? Is this something that Bertech's been doing a lot of the late work or is this something that staff is expecting to do, city staff?
Mayor, let me, let me answer that question. We have, as Michael mentioned, we have already started the education process with our commercial accounts. And I believe, and I will check with staff with regard to our mailers that would be an insert into your, into your billing, residential billing. But by and large throughout the entire SB thirteen eighty-three program, we, we have, I don't know if you can see this, we've delivered a notebook and we also have it electronically to the city that really takes the program from A to Z. And a majority of what needs to be done would be completed by Bertech. The education and outreach, compliance efforts, obviously, collection. We would assist you with the procurement requirements. Even the edible food requirement, while we are, we're, we're trash haulers, we're not food haulers, but we do have access to organizations that perform those duties and that would meet CalRecycle requirements. So we pretty much will be able to, to, to handle all of your SB thirteen eighty-three needs as well as, as you all know, we have the, the largest materials processing network in San Bernardino County. And so therefore, Montclair, as a Bertech city, has access to those facilities for the processing of food waste, green waste, obviously, your, your solid waste and recyclables. So it is a lot of work. The, the presentation that you just heard touched on a lot of the areas, but there is a lot with regard, a lot of work with regard to reporting with auditing and then just the, the actual collection and whatnot that needs to be, that needs to be handled. But we, we have a, a plan, a very sophisticated plan to approach this. I know I've been working with city staff on fine tuning a new ordinance. There was some thought that we could expand your existing ordinances to incorporate thirteen eighty-three, but it may, thirteen eighty-three may be a little too elaborate to make those changes and, and it would be probably better suited to develop a, a, a new ordinance. And, and that, for a final on that, I would leave to Mr. Starr and how we would move forward on that. Once that piece is put in place, we'll be able to draft our amendment. And the amendment to our agreement basically allows us to implement the ordinance so that we do have the authority to collect and to process the materials. We will also have a, a new rate resolution. There, as I said, there's a lot, there's a lot of work attached to this. We are currently working on rate components. And, and this basically falls into two categories. One will be the compliance side of things and the other, obviously, from a processing, a processing component cost. So we'll be presenting those, those numbers to staff and to Mr. Starr and start that, that discussion. uh, and start that, that discussion so that, um, uh, ultimately we'll be bringing that back to council for their, uh, for their approval. Uh, but it is, um, uh, today's meeting, today's workshop is very important to understand the, the impacts of thirteen eighty-three and the fact that, um, we, while we, we have some time, we do need to, to get started on this. As soon as possible. I know that, um, uh, Mayor, you mentioned that, um, Representative from CalRecycle was, was on, I don't know, Ben, if you're still on, if there's any comment that you might have or something that we may have, um, uh, omitted or, uh, uh, left unaddressed for some reason. If you wanted to comment.
Yeah, Ben Johnson is on, uh, on Zoom, so if Mr. Johnson would like to say something, uh, feel free to, there he is. Go ahead, Ben.
Uh, good evening.
Go ahead, Ben, just introduce yourself if you don't mind.
Uh, Benjamin Johnson, CalRecycle, Local Assistant to Market Development, the branch. Just, um, I work with, uh, the city of Montclair as well as eleven other jurisdictions in the county of San Bernardino regarding implementation of, uh, programs deemed, uh, law by CalRecycle in the legislature. Um, I've been working with Montclair for quite some time now and the city of Montclair and working with them on MCR, which is the mandatory commercial recycling, as well as eighteen twenty-six, which is the, um, organics, uh, kind of precursor to thirteen eighty-three. Um, so basically, um, the city, uh, has been, um, and I guess I can give you some context, the city has been moving forward with implementing both of those, all three programs, but in particular, um, MCR and more programs. And so, um, I think, um, what, uh, we just, uh, heard now with the presentation was a very broad and also, um, at the same time covered the specifics in detail as to what the law is and how the law should be, uh, implemented. Um, as far as specific questions, um, I can address those. But as I spoke to, uh, Janet Kulbeck, uh, earlier today regarding, uh, my role this evening, and basically it is to provide, um, a little bit of context, uh, answer any questions that I possibly can. But I will say, um, staff has been directed to, um, any really deep dive questions, refer those to or defer to our process team. And the reason being is to that, so that we don't give one answer to one jurisdiction and another answer to another jurisdiction. So for continuity, they would ask that if there's anything that I cannot answer, rather than be anecdotal and provide you with something that is not really specific, I would rather, uh, yield to, uh, get the question and then provide an answer for you at another time.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going back to Mike again. Uh, obviously this is, uh, my arrogance from Bertec. This is a huge undertaking, um, project. I don't see any costs associated with this, so are there going to be results of SB thirteen eighty-three? Are there potential future rate increases?
Uh, yes, Mayor, as I, I mentioned, um, we have, uh, there, there are two, two major areas that will be, uh, impacted by cost with regard to thirteen eighty-three. One will be the enforcement and compliance side of the, uh, ledger. And the other is the processing of the food waste, um, at the, uh, at the MRF or material recovery facility. We have and will be fine tuning the numbers for the city of Montclair, and I will be making those presentations to staff and city manager, uh, within the next few weeks. So that, um, uh, we can, uh, uh, start the implementation process as soon as possible. And that being bringing it forward, um, to the city, um, uh, Mr. Starr, I, I don't know. Um, remind me if in Montclair, um, we would need to go through a two eighteen process with something like this. Or how would it be addressed once the program development, um, is finalized? The, uh, amendment to the agreement is finalized and the rate resolution.
Well, because this is mandated by the state of California, we'll have to evaluate that in the context of two eighteen. But my initial impression is that the mandate would simply be that we have to implement, uh, the provisions of SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, two eighteen generally is related to whether or not the city, uh, makes a, uh, rate adjustment that is, uh, not necessarily mandated by the state, but is requested by the service provider. So I think that is the difference in the two of these cases.
Very good. That, 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 um, uh, is our impression as well. But, um, as you know, we, sometimes we have different points of view from various jurisdictions. So with that, it will simplify the, um, the process, so to speak. So Mayor, we would be able to bring this to council, um, soon and then get, move forward with our implementation. But as I mentioned early on, um, uh, we are, we're confident that the city will move forward with the program. We are already starting and will continue to move forward with our public education and outreach. To the extent that we can educate our residential and commercial customers about thirteen eighty-three. Once the council decides and, and, and approves the program and the rates, then we'll get into the specifics as far as when it will start and how much it will cost. But, um, uh, I, I believe at the end of the day that, uh, while it is very extensive, council will be, um, fairly satisfied with the, with the, uh, uh, not only the program that we will bring forward for the city of Montclair, but, um, the, uh, the cost, uh, uh, exposure that we'll have as well.
Okay, great. I have, uh, two councilmen who want to speak. I'll, uh, Councilman Rue and, uh, Council, Mayor Proton Rue and Councilman Martinez. I'll start with, uh, Mayor Proton Rue. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have, uh, I'll try to distill my questions as best I can.
Sure.
This is, I know this is not something you put in. This is something the legislature did. One, how does, and how does a trash hauler or anybody else determine the amount of household food waste there is? One person may generate a lot or they may generate none at all. I generate very little. I'm fairly frugal in the way I purchase things. So how do they determine that? Cause we've got to reach this average.
Well, I think it, it starts out and, and actually what we have been doing for the past, um, maybe you started our, our, we started some pilot programs at, on, in surrounding cities about a year ago, testing, um, uh, collection methods and measuring food waste, which, um, varied community to community, but a lot of it based on participation. And, um, so, um, uh, to go back to the first part of your statement and question, you're absolutely right. Um, the state has, has created a law, um, and the city is responsible for implementing that law. Bertec, your trash hauler is the, the vehicle, if you will, um, uh, or the facilitator to take the, the elements within the, uh, regulation and, um, assure the city that they are in compliance. So, so we do all the work, but it is not a, uh, a- as, as, uh, Mr. Starr mentioned, it's not a Bertec program. Um, this is, this is a state law and, and all cities and counties throughout the state are now required, um, to address the regulations within this law. Our first year out, we are making a, uh, uh, for lack of a better way to say it, an educated estimate on the amount of food waste that is generated on an average for all, all households. A year from now, when we have all of the documented actual tonnage and, 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 uh, uh, food waste disposal amount, uh, those numbers may be adjusted upward, downward, or we may be right on, uh, right on target. But, uh, uh, we went through, uh, uh, pilot programs that included probably forty-five hundred, um, residential accounts in different areas and, um, uh, received some, some pretty good feedback that, that plays into, um, the numbers that we've established. So, uh, uh, Councilman Rue, that's, um, that's how we, um, set up a, uh, an estimate as far as the, the pounds per house. And it takes into consideration households that have very large families and a lot of food or food waste, um, down to the individual that, um, eats out most of the time and has very little or no food waste. Um, so we've taken all of those, uh, uh, considerations, uh, uh, in, uh, in mind.
Well, uh, you know, if I'm a regular resident, and I am, I'm not going to understand this. Let's just say I have a jar of mayonnaise in my refrigerator. Three quarters of it is gone, but I have a quarter that's left and it's turned. It's no longer edible. Am I supposed to scoop all that out and put it in this plastic bag in my kitchen?
You could. Um, this program is generally, um, geared towards, um, food scraps, um, leftover food, for example, that you may have, um, through the week and, and you clean out your, uh, refrigerator or old fruit or vegetables. Um, it, it, it's, it's more along those lines, um, rather than content inside of a recyclable container like a peanut butter jar or mayonnaise or ketchup. Not that you couldn't include that material in the plastic bag and, and, and put it in there, but, um, that, that's not, and, and Michael, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. That's not the, the full intent. We, we want to get that, um, uh, those, those other types of food and food product, um, out of the trash and, um, uh, and into a, a compost or, uh, uh, or digester.
So a family ha- and, and I'm trying to understand this, a family have their dinner. Some of the children didn't eat the carrots and the broccoli. Are those supposed to be scooped off the plate into this plastic bag?
That, that is the plan. That is the.
That's, that seems a bit unsanitary to me. The other question I, I, I have is now we're asking people to put things like this in a plastic bag and then put it out where they put out their green waste. In the meantime, they go in the house, they go to bed. It's one in the morning and there's a raccoon outside. It gets into the plastic bag. Now there's foods all over the street or a stray dog or a coyote. Uh, that means then it sits there until the trap, until the street sweeper comes along.
Okay. The plastic bag, um, that we're talking about could be a Ziploc bag, something small, preferably clear, and it goes into your green waste container, not, not along the side. So it is collected with your green waste. So it, right now, people are throwing away food and, and whether it's a, whether that food waste is in a black ba- black barrel or a green barrel, it's still out there. Uh, so if it is not, um, if they're not getting into the, into the, um, into the cans now, um, with it being sealed up, actually, it'll be less, um, opportunity for odors and whatnot to attract animals. But it will be in this, it'll be in your green barrel rather than your black bear.
This is a lot of work for average residents, um, who are very, very busy. Um, what if somebody just takes some of this, they take the carrots and broccoli off the plate and put it down to garbage disposal? I mean, a lot of people still do that.
They do, and, and this program is designed to, um, uh, for, for those that, that don't, as long as it's not going in the trash container. However, um, a- and maybe, uh, Ben, you might, you might address, uh, that issue with regard to people putting food down the, uh, garbage disposal. Is there a position that CalRecycle is taking with regard to that, the continuance of that practice?
Uh, thanks, Mike. Uh, at this point, that, um, is a good question, Councilmember Ru, if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
That's okay. Don't worry.
Rue, I'm sorry, forgive me.
That's okay. Don't worry about it.
Um, Councilmember, um, I, I, I think, uh, looking back at the FAQs, and this is the, the tricky part with, um, you know, answering questions. I'm trying to recall because we had such a flood of FAQs come, questions come through and we tried to post as many as we could. And that's a, I don't know that that question, and, and it never fails. I'll be honest with you. You could be on a call and there's going to be one question or two that you're like, hmm, I don't know that that question has been answered or asked. But as far as the position of CalRecycle, I am not at liberty to say this is our position. I will say that question may or may not have come up. And in order for me to provide you with a correct answer, I'm going to say, um, I'm going to go through the FAQs. And if I could either respond back to, uh, either, um, the council or to Janet or to, um, Steve, cause that's who I've been working with through or whomever, I can provide you with an answer to that question because, um, on its face, I could answer it, but I don't want to give you anecdotal answer to your question.
Thank you. And, you know, I, I would appreciate a follow-up on that. I, I'm frustrated with this because it's putting more and more on residents who already have a lot put on them as it is. Uh, the last question I have has to deal with rates. I'm very concerned about rates going up. I hear people all the time tell me they think the trash rates are very high. I would concur. That's just me. We have a median household income in Montclair of fifty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars a year for a family of four. That's not very high. Those are truly working class families. And to add more cost to them every month really does a disservice. We're asking them to work harder at their home, to sort out all this stuff. The plates pile up to make sure this doesn't do this, this doesn't do that, this has to go here, this has to go here. Oh, this is recyclable, this isn't. We're asking a lot, and then we're going to increase rates. You know, working class families can't afford this anymore. I'm being very honest. And if anybody has a solution to that, let me know.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, thank you. I'm a little curious about the plastic too. Uh, we've been moving away from single-use plastic as much as possible. And I'm trying to picture myself in the scenario. I think what I would do is probably have a, a much smaller trash can next to my regular trash can where I just collect the waste throughout the week. But what it sounds to me is being, um, recommended is that, you know, after every meal, scraps are put into a small plastic bag. Is that absolutely necessary? Can the scraps go directly into the green bin?
That's a great question. And the answer is unfortunately, no. The reason being is if, uh, your green waste is contaminated with food waste, then the only, the only thing I can, we can do with that green waste is use it in a compost, to make compost out of it because of the food waste. Um, we're trying to keep the food waste, uh, separate from the green waste because we have a larger, um, uh, market for, um, mulch, which is just clean green waste. We have so much green waste coming in. We, we can't, literally, you can't make that much compost. Yet if it was contaminated with food, you could not get rid of it in any other fashion. We need to bring in Montclair's green waste, um, market the, um, uh, for diversion, for diversion purposes, market that, that green waste, uh, as mulch and reserving some of it for the compost process. But, um, there's just too much green waste to make it all compost. So we have two choices. Um, we could, um, as you saw in the presentation with the containers that were out there, we could decide to put out a brown, um, barrel and have a separate food waste collection, uh, that's only food waste. And then the food waste could be put directly into that container. The problem is now you have four containers on the, uh, at the curb and you add another truck to the collection process that we're already using three vehicles. This would be a fourth vehicle to collect the food-only barrel. And, um, and I totally understand Councilman Rue's concern with regard to rates. And if we had a separate route for food waste, the rates would, would really escalate. Where, the way that we've presented this in our plan for not only Montclair, but almost all of our, um, San Bernardino County cities, especially in the Valley area, is to utilize their green waste barrel and eliminate any additional collection cost. Therefore, we would only have a processing cost adjustment where we have to separate, literally separate the bags of food from the green waste, then depackage all of the material and process the food waste. And I lost my train of thought there.
You're saying, Mike, to be a huge cost increase if you want with a fourth container?
Right. So, so there wouldn't
More personnel, that cost is gonna be huge on the ratepayers.
Right. So, um, thank you, Mayor. And, and, and so it avoids the collection cost and we really just look at a processing cost and the compliance, uh, compliance cost. So we, we try, we try to put together a program for all cities that would be the, the least impactful to the ratepayer, but yet we, we need to make sure that the city of Montclair meets compliance. Because without that, um, and the regulations, as it, as, as mentioned in the presentation, there is a, an enforcement that Cal Recycle will go through. And continued, i- if any municipality continues to, to not move forward with their program, then there are fines that the state will assess to those communities. So we're trying to keep the city of, of Montclair, uh, in compliance at the minimal cost. But you, you saw all the work that needs to be done and, and the processing that, uh, that, that has to be done as well when we try to bring that food waste out of the green waste. We, we, we're, we're really kind of at a loss, um, for, for any other way, uh, outside of what we're presenting.
So you may have answered my second question, but I'm not sure. And that is, at some point, is the food removed from the plastic bags and separated?
Yes. Um, so, a- and I do apologize because I kind of get drifted off on a few topics. So what, what we'll do typically, um, everyone will put their, their plastic bags of, of food and, and you, you need to do as much as you can. You're not gonna have every food scrap, but, but try to participate to the, to the best of your ability at each home. You put it in your green waste barrel. On Monday or whatever day your service is, is performed, the truck comes by and dumps all the green waste into his load. He fills that truck and goes to our facility and literally dumps the load out on the ground. We have to manually go through that green waste load and pull out every one of these bags that have food waste in them. Place them in a separate container. Take it to a, to a a machine or machinery that will depackage it. And the plastic bag gets pulled apart and the food waste is now able to be processed, which goes through another process. In the meantime, the green waste now is left clean. And you can, um, uh, now market that green waste at a lower cost because it is very costly to, to compost the, the, the green waste. You can market that green waste at a lower cost and therefore we, um, are able to move it and uh, obviously create the diversion, uh, for the city of Montclair, if that clarifies it a little bit for you.
Yes. And then one comment, I have looked into the cost of compostable trash bags and they're ridiculously expensive, but is it possible to maybe just include it when educating the residents about where to put the scraps? That that's a possibility as well as to purchase those compostable trash, trash bags?
Actually, we are not recommending the use of compostable trash bags. The, the timetable for them to compost would be well beyond, um, the timetable that we're processing this material. So it can be, it can be a reused, uh, a Ziploc bag. It could be reinforced, uh, produce bags from, from your grocery store. Uh, any clear plastic bag that you may have, uh, bring into your household. And then there are even some kitchen bags that if people have a lot of it, we, we prefer not to have black bags because sometimes people confuse that and sorters will confuse that for trash. But the, uh, kitchen bags and the clear bags are, are more easily identified as, uh, bags that we are educating the residents to put their food waste in.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment and a question. But my comment is for Mr. Johnson regarding people who use, um, garbage disposals. I'm pretty proud of the fact that we have almost no waste in my house, uh, except paper, but we have no food waste because everything goes down the garbage disposal. And so I really would like to hear his answer when he has an available answer for that. And then also I have a question. I apologize in advance if, if this question has already been answered as I was unavailable for the first part of this meeting, but I've heard that there should be an average number of waste per household. And, um, so my question is, when households don't meet that average number, then what? Is there like a penalty down the line that you didn't, because people just, because we didn't put the stuff in the right container? Or what happens if we don't meet, if residents don't meet the target?
I'm, I'm sorry, Council, Councilmember Johnson, was that, who was that directed to?
Was that Denise? I think that was, was that to you, Denise? Was that to Mike?
Uh, yeah, well, something happened and I just cut, kind of got, um, frozen for a so- second. I don't know. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So my question was, if residents don't meet the compost target, then what?
Next question is to Mike, uh, Bertek?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. I, I thought you'd mentioned, I, I thought that was to, uh, to Ben, uh, Johnson. There are compliance measures. Um, we will, they are literally what's built into the law that on a, uh, on a, uh, regular basis, we need to, um, audit what is being put in the various containers, whether they're trash, recycling or organics container. And, um, and if it is found that, um, people are not participating or contaminating the various, uh, materials, they, they will be noticed on that. Mike Hefman, what, what, um, what are the, the various steps, uh, from a, a compliance standpoint and, um, any enforcement activity?
Right. Thank you, Mike. Um, so there are, there are no specific targets per generator to generate a certain amount of organic waste. But what is required, as you were mentioning, Mike, is that, that through the route audit process, that the containers are inspected to ensure that materials are going into the appropriate container. So if you're in a household where during the week you did not generate organic waste or food waste, and there's no food waste in your green barrel, then as long as there's no food waste in your black or blue barrel as well, you're in compliance. So, um, this Cal Recycle has taken measurements based on 2014 numbers and estimates that fifty-four percent of, or of material landfill is organic waste, but that comes from a lot of streams. So when it comes to the individual generator, specifically the resident in this case, as long as material is in the correct container at the time of inspection, they're compliant and there's no penalty associated with that. And that is one of the ways that we're able to accommodate maybe a large household that generates a lot of food waste as long as it's going into the green waste barrel, uh, properly bagged. They're in compliance, uh, as well as the generators who maybe have minimum waste or none at all for the week. And as long as that food waste is not being left in the black barrel and disposed of as trash, uh, they would too be in compliance. So it's more of what is being placed in the containers, not so much as a target that needs to be produced or generated by any specific resident. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Mr. Hefman. Yes, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and we have about fourteen minutes left before our council meeting starts. So the next person is Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. As the discussion kept, uh, rolling, it, it just only added to my questions. First of all, uh, Mike, I know that this is not something that was implemented at the behest of Bertek. And there was no wide, uh, public cry, outcry for this to be implemented. This was done by the legislature in 2016, rammed through by environmental activists. And the opposition to this bill is over two pages long, which included folks like the Center for Food Safety, who are concerned about the preservation and sanitation of food as it was collected and then handed to one entity. And that is something that we really need to address because there is no guarantees in the bill that when food is collected and handed from one group to another, especially in this era of COVID, that the sanitation, the preservation and the integrity of the food is, is, uh, is kept clean. And that's a concern of mine, but that's not Bertek's doing. That's the state, like, state legislatures. Let's, let me ask or get, touch on the immediate question that Mr. Hefman had just touched upon, and that was the enforcement mechanism. I had written some notes based on that on page six of the presentation. I wanted to know who is gonna go around and weigh all these new cans now, well, four new, four cans, because you got the black for trash, blue for recycle, green for green waste. And now you're gonna have brown for food. Who's gonna go around weighing these cans or inspecting them? Are guys gonna be getting off their trucks, looking at cans to make sure that a household is in compliance? And two, uh, or, uh, related question to that, who, what, how is it going to be prevented that you put your cans out at nine o'clock at night, you go to bed? Our trash gets picked up rather consistently at six AM on Tuesday mornings. We hear the trash cans, but who's to say from the time we put it out on, in the alley, we live in an alley, we have an alley, to the time it gets picked up, that someone walking by doesn't throw their inappropriate, uh, trash in our cans? And we then get ding for not being in compliance. That's one question with respect to that. I have a lot more. If Mr. Hefman wants to address that, that'd be great, but I do have a lot more.
Yes, certainly. Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. When the, each of those components, what will happen during the audit process? So by the regulation, the audits are set to begin April first of this year is when onsite route audits would have to begin or waste evaluations where it's evaluated at our material recovery facility. Both of those methods could be done. And to your point earlier, uh, maybe in commercial container instances where the driver is out of the truck and servicing the bin, he would also conduct a review to the extent that he could, uh, just while servicing the bin. And I think that would be more entailed for gross contamination like our existing programs currently have. But the specific requirements for thirteen eighty-three, the route audits or flipping the lid, if you will, to your point, would start with an initial education and outreach component for the first two years. But to answer your question, the regulation requires that beginning in twenty twenty-four, that repetitive violators are issued penalties for not being in compliance. And that's how it would escalate. So the first two years of the route audit program would be focused on education and outreach activities and then beginning in twenty twenty-four. And again, it's based on the city's discretion, but the notice of violations and escalation would occur for each individual container depending on how much contamination is found in their container, because the goal is to divert seventy-five percent, um, of organics away from the landfill.
And this whole, if I could add to that, um, Councilman Lopez, I would make it an example of that, of that fourth barrel, but the program that we're presenting to Montclair is, would only, uh, you would maintain the three barrels that you have. We would not add a fourth. So that's, that's a good thing. That's why we do the plastic bag, um, ritual, so to speak. And then, um, uh, from a, from an audit standpoint, it's not every household in the city that will be audited. They will be random sampling of, of those, um, homes to see if they're participating or not. And if we do find a violator, as Mike, Mike mentioned, we go through two years of trying to educate that individual. So it would have to be on, on multiple occasions, instead of the occasional someone walking through the alley and throws it into your container. If your container was, was even audited that particular quarter, uh, there are quarterly audits throughout the year. So it is a, a little bit of a checks and balance, but it is not as elaborate an audit is, is maybe, um, uh, some are led to believe.
Well, let me also bring up the issue that two of my colleagues brought up, uh, Councilman Rue and Martinez. And that is the issue of the plastic bags, throwing your food scraps in the plastic bags and then throwing them in your green waste. Now, oh, by the way, the random audits that are gonna be randomly, uh, homes being checked randomly, I think we better be careful because you might have challenges with respect to equal application of the law because you're maybe targeting one house and not two houses down. And you bet those residents are gonna complain, as they should. Um, but regarding the plastic bags, come on, we all know those plastic bags are not gonna endure being flipped into the main load. There's gonna be some tearing. You're gonna have food contaminate all of that green waste, cut grass clippings, and you're back to that problem. So here is the ludicrous notion behind this bill that somehow doing this that is gonna result in a greater cost to you, Bertek, as the trash hauler and collector, us as a city for providing trash pickup service through you. They're passing the buck on to all of us, not taking into account the burden on families, not taking into account just the practicality of transferring food scraps to a green can that then gets put into another can where it inevitably is going to rip. Now, sure, I mean, maybe people double bag it, I doubt it. But you're gonna have that problem where you're gonna have contamination, as you described. Also, and this is why I don't think this works, but again, this is the legislature and their infinite wisdom mandating this on every city.
Solution.
They offered no solution with respect to this. They just threw it at us and now they want us to foot the bill for it and charge the residents. And you bet there's going to, we're gonna face the up and arms for residents compounding on the podium that we raise their rates when it's the state that enacted this. And that's what bugs me. The issue regarding enforcement, though, I have a problem with. Did you say, Mr. Aragon, that it would be Bertek that would be handling that on behalf of the city?
Uh, with regard to the audits and, um, the reporting, we would do that. Depending on what level of enforcement, that would be a city directive. So, um, if there were NOBs or, or some, some measure to correct the, uh, contamination issue. Because ultimately, if we report to the state, all of this comes into a state report that, um, we have a high level of contamination, a low level of participation and whatnot. It comes back to the city. So we're gonna, we're gonna do all we can to identify and, and correct, uh, behavior that isn't in, uh, in conjunction with this program. But that information goes to Uh, but that information goes to the city and then the city would decide how they would like to handle it.
And, and there it is by problem, correct behavior that is, and I think you said, out of hand or out of whatever. That, we're basically now going to turn our residents into criminals, more or less, for not complying with throwing away pizza crusts and some, you know, uh, macaroni that fell on the floor that the kid didn't want. And now they, if they don't do it correctly and throw it in the appropriate can, chances are later down the road, they're gonna get a fine, and that's wrong. Um, I have been a huge advocate and staff knows this even before I got on council, that, sure, I have been a stickler for folks that improperly, uh, failed to recycle, um, plastics and rubbers and glass. And I still am a big advocate of that because that stuff will not go away unless it is recycled. But food scraps, I don't care how much of this percentage they're claiming is carbon, oh gosh, climate warming influence. Um, and they're claiming, and this is in the state legislature's analysis about the bill, that is more potent than carbon dioxide. I quite frankly, don't care about that because food scraps do biodegrade and eventually go away. Plastics don't. So on a plastic end, I'm, I'm with you fully. And again, I'm just venting, sir, Mike, I know you're nodding your head. I don't want you to think this is an anti-Bertek rant, because it's, because it's not.
I understand.
But, uh, but here is, here's my other problem. You, you, there's gonna have to be a high level of education involved for residents, especially the Latin community, because many Latin committee, uh, community members do not understand separating plastics. We still have in our city folks that throw in metals in their recycling bin because they think just because they take it to a recycling center and they accept it as recycled product, I can also throw my metal scraps in the blue can too. Or I could also throw, for example, green waste. They wanna throw cactus still in the green waste and you can't do that because it's a succulent and it must be thrown in the trash. Uh, there is the issue still of folks under, trying to understand whether, uh, or not styrofoam can be recycled. Aerosol bottles that, that, that now can be recycled.
Councilman John Lopez, we need to wrap it up. I apologize.
Well, the, the, explain, explain to me, sir, how can we improve? Because we need to first, we failed miserably. We as a society, not Bertek, have failed miserably at educating the public in properly, right, uh, throwing things in the blue can. And if we failed in that regard, how are we gonna guarantee that folks understand about throwing food in the green can now? I just don't see this coming about. I think it's more problematic. I'm with you, Bertek. I, I really am. I wish you all the, the best of luck, but I think this bill is gonna be rescinded later down the road because I think it's gonna, people are gonna realize it wasn't fully vetted, thought out, and it's gonna wind up being more problematic than good.
I know Bruce Cook wants to speak and I'll give him one minute or a second, but I, I will say this, that, uh, we're between a rock and a hole uh, as a city, you know, as all cities are. And I don't particularly like it. It'd be nice if our local legislators contacted us and asked us, uh, what we thought about this bill before they voted on it. But that's now passed, so we are now at the position we have to enforce. We have to be the bad guys, basically. The legislators are the good guys, uh, they move on. But we have to implement this program. Uh, so my question to staff is, Ed, is where do we go next on this? What's gonna happen next, Ed? You there, Ed?
We are in the process of developing the ordinance. Uh, we hope to bring it to the council, uh, sometime within the next month. Uh, certainly within the next two months. Uh, and that will implement or at least put in place a number of the requirements, uh, that we have to comply with, uh, particularly the enforcement side of issues. Uh, the rate structure will be down the road, not something that the council will be considering at the immediate time. Uh, we have a full, uh, year to evaluate the steps going forward. Uh, Bertek will do their analysis to determine, uh, what, uh, what the stream will be as far as the production of the organic recyclables. They'll evaluate how the compliance is moving forward with the, uh, various residents as well as the uh, commercial businesses. Keep in mind, of course, that twenty twenty-two isn't the end-all. Uh, the program is phased in at least through twenty twenty-four with some programming components being implemented in twenty twenty-five. So we have a number of years, uh, to structure the program. So uh, as we go forward, we will be bringing, uh, each item back to the city council and getting your input as well as your authorization to proceed, uh, with the various components.
Okay, so next time we see this will be, of your orders, and I'll ask my council colleagues in the meantime, if you have any more further questions, uh, you go through Ed, or you can contact Mike Aragon if you want. I think Mike would be okay there. You can contact him too. Please contact with, with questions and, um, as I stated before, this, and then of course, the question regarding, uh, if you place your, uh, your food in the, uh, in your sink, um, I'm both called.
Garden disposal.
Thank you. Uh, if staff can, uh, get an answer back to the city council on that question, that'd be great as well. I know I have Bruce Cole that wants to speak and Bruce, again, if you make it one minute, I appreciate it. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you. Um, I will make it very brief. Uh, I wish we had more time. Uh, shame on the council members who oppose this. This is absolutely long overdue. You guys should have been putting this together long ago. I learned as a child, uh, how to recycle. It's simple. Uh, children in school are learning it today. Uh, if you have problems with costs, subsidize it. You guys are rolling in cash with sales tax and, um, bond money, so subsidize it if you don't like, uh, passing on the cost of, uh, cost of residents. And, uh, we should all be composting our food scraps already ourselves. I do it. I, even though I live in an apartment, I send my compost over to my mom's house. She puts it in her ga- garden. This is as simple as it can be. I'm glad the state is mandating it because the city should have been doing this a long time ago. Put it in the newsletter on educating on how to compost. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to recess this workshop. It is seven oh two, so we'll start the city council meeting at seven oh five in three minutes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your time and, uh, uh, taking time to listen to us. So, uh, have a great evening.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be on the panel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get those questions answered for you.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, we'll see you, guys.